Oh gosh.
No, well, when they got older, they became very good friends.
Yeah.
And they both died on the same day.
Right, that's right.
I was gonna say.
Same day.
Yeah.
50th anniversary of the 4th of July.
Wow.
I think they had a plan if it was going first.
Are we okay now?
Well, since we're going live, so I'm just gonna start now.
Okay, are you okay?
I'm good.
Okay, folks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the February 14th minutes.
Motion made and second by Valerie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, minutes are approved as written. Next item on our agenda is an application by A and E and SNY Center relative to a zone change recommendation for the medical center behind the resort lifestyles. This pertains to tax map number 86-1-3.9. Is there somebody here to speak on behalf of the developer?
Yeah, I'm a consultant, the engineers for projects. Jim, let's. Quite popular to be applicant.
Yeah. She's so good.
Yeah, I. Sorry about that. So again, we're here for a referral to the town board for a zone change application. Call from last meeting, we were asked to take a step back and consider a zone change to the neighborhood shopping district versus the commercial A district. Talked to a little with Mike and just to put it out there, the issue we have with the neighborhood shopping, now kind of pop back here, is that the setbacks within the neighborhood shopping district are 50 feet when you bought a residential or restricted agricultural zone. And our current layout, the phase one building is 25.4 feet off from the property. So we would need a variance to go to that neighborhood shopping district to do the layout as we have it. The other issue is that there's a 30-foot landscape buffer required. And again, we're within that 25 feet of the property line as we bought the resort lifestyle communities. So we're willing to consider, or you know, we sent a letter into the supervisor and the chair saying that, you know, we're open to the change in application to the neighborhood shopping, which is that issue is the concern.
Okay, and I thank you for sending that letter. I think this board, what I was hearing from this board is we wanted a less intensive usage and the neighborhood shopping zoning would be a much less intensive usage than commercial A. So I appreciate that. Did you want to add anything further about the 25 foot instead of 50 foot setback?
Well, it's just, well, we would have to apply four variants to the ZVA because of that 25 foot. We are, even though it is a, maybe I'm bringing up. So the setback to the retirement community, while it's, you know, we require that 50 feet, we're over more 25 feet from the property line, we're still greater than 100 feet, well, greater than 50 feet to the neighboring building for the resort lifestyle. We are, we need all the setbacks for the landscape offer and the building setback to the Starview homes. So that wouldn't be the issue, it's just the issue with the resort place.
Rod, the other building, and I know we haven't talked much about it, does that fit in neighborhood shopping?
As far as usage?
Yes.
Yes, it's the same, it's still medical use.
Okay.
You know, I do have, so here's, this is right from your code, all permitted uses within the neighborhood shopping. And we're still, you know, phase one and phase two are professional offices or personal spaces.
Okay, and did we sort out this bank parking?
For resort lifestyle?
Yes.
I did not bring the slide, I should have, but we did send in the approved site plan, okay? On the approved site plan, the bank parking is in this area right here. There is even a note on there that if we were to have to construct that bank parking, the wall would have to be rebuilt.
Yes.
Clearly on.
That's, I looked at it, yeah.
That's on.
No doubt, okay.
And Matt had also talked to the code enforcement, you know, like a year after it was built, as far as the parking study goes and submitted something that. Code enforcement didn't, you know, we did what he asked.
And if I recall, that was the agreement that we would re-review the parking, the bank parking issue, one to one and a half years afterwards, and it was in fact reviewed again.
It's my understanding, yeah.
So it's gone.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So the, it also said in our, in our code that it should be a minimum of 30 feet immediately adjoining any such property line that it shall consist of a landscaped buffer. So is there anything that you could do in that space landscaping wise where it's a concern or maybe the variance?
In this area here?
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
Well, so just to be clear, I mean, we need a variance along that side of the ride. This is our highest point here, the 25 feet. We certainly could landscape.
Yeah, I'm just gonna reference existing property, I mean, your building fits up like, start by what you showed for the site plan, you know, attractive looking.
Valerie, if it's a buffer and not a setback, this board has the ability to modify that? If it's, if it's a buffer.
Okay, you know, the other question I had was, it says about, did you read the part about the service area, meaning it's 100 feet? So like any service areas, it said like, you know, like trash and dumpster.
I did, what we have to consider, you know, what would we do there?
Yeah. Like it should be properly screened and that, and that would come under site plan, but just looking ahead for this building.
Right, the screening part isn't, that's sort of the concern. I, realistically, we'd want to put it somewhere in this area, so that might be something too.
Yeah, like any deliveries or anything, it's like the service area.
Yeah, the only service, true service area would be the trash, the dumpster corral or field.
Yeah.
You know, we can look at different ways we can be in that.
And you're aware, Rod, that if you get the approval for the zone change and if you go forward, this board is going to be reviewing the site plan and you know you have to address that.
Absolutely.
Black and white.
Yeah, this part, so with this introduction of the variance, my understanding would be first we go, get the referral from this board for the zone change, go to the, back to the plant, or excuse me, town board, get the zone changed, then we have to go to the ZVA for variances.
Come back here first.
Yeah.
With your site plan, then go to the ZVA. I mean, for discussion.
But is there any, we're, is there any way we could get the referral for the variance all wrapped up with one and with the, I just want to try and streamline this and construction season, I mean, we were just talking about it. I'm looking at May before I'm back here for site plan, considering town board, I need the public hearing, which will probably be the end of March, ZVA, we need a public hearing, which will probably be the end of April. So now, um, you know, I'm in May, we're in May, before we're back for you for planning board.
Let's look at, because remember, we meet twice a month, town board meets twice a month.
Right, so it's, my understanding would be town board, their next meeting, they can set the public hearing to the following meeting, which would be their second meeting in March. And then we go to the ZVA, and if I have to do two meetings with that and one set the public hearing, no?
No, you don't need to, they, the, the public hearing gets set as long as you meet the deadline.
Okay.
It's true to submission, yeah.
Right, right.
But also, right after the, right after town board asks, you can start moving on the other stuff.
Okay. As soon as, yeah.
It's like have a weird one ready to go.
Rodney, your building one is a strange shape, the part that's hanging over that's about 25 feet into the area that it should be. Is there any way to simply reshape that building so that more of it goes into the part over in the lower left? It just looks like it's okay. I mean, we're just drawing lines at this point, we're not.
Can I answer that from a? Because my, my answer is, I'm the site guy.
So I've talked to a few different architectural planners, and I'm gonna start with landscaping too. I've actually talked to a landscaper a lot that I know really well. It's my intention, unfortunately, to build here, I would like to landscape a whole backside that's, I think, supportive to pull in. It sits up on a hill and it's, it's a great hill now, I mean, I've got some beautiful pine trees there. It wouldn't take much to put in some nice flowers and some plants, I have no problem going right around the corner there. This isn't exactly drawn to the scale that I'd like to see it. So to answer your question, it does a little, little funny there, jammed into that corner. But I think the most important thing is just to make sure that we have the space to build the square footage we need and then obviously accommodate the parking. I think when we pushed ourselves back towards the middle of the property, it started to really limit our ability to put parking in there. So that's one of these, but this needs to look a little more uniform from the backside, which is why I like the. It's his fault.
Plus, this is, this is a recommendation of his own change, where he had plenty of time to get into the site plan.
Yeah. Any further questions from the board?
Just to, I just need to grasp on the meetings that we're looking at with the, with the planning board. We're, we're opposite of the town board now, which can probably be more of an advantage to us, because we'd be following right up with their meeting. Because. Yeah. I'm just trying to.
I mean.
Orchestrate the date is what I was just thinking.
I was just moving fast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a 9th and 23rd.
Right.
I, I think we're in a position that if we, unless somebody else has other questions. I think we're in a position where we can vote on whether or not to make a recommendation to the town board relative to a zone change to neighborhood shopping.
And if we can add some, some reasoning for that, that would be great for the town board, if it is a positive one.
Is it possible, I don't know, I just, my fear is going to the town board and I'm saying, well, why would we be giving you a zone change if you know we need that variance? Okay, all right, I just.
So, so the, this board is, is supposed to make a recommendation on an area, and I think in general, what they're saying is, even if you go away, and this doesn't happen, that this is a good use of this area as compared to what it was before, which is so much more restrictive, and this is not as bad as, you know, as intense as commercial, but something that's a reasonable transition is probably the, the idea. So I don't think that that board is gonna really look at this. They shouldn't really be looking at whether variances required in my investigation.
And we can incorporate into, depending on what, which way we go with the recommendation, we can incorporate a recommendation to the ZVA relative to whether we are recommending approval of the various or not approving.
How would you put that in that motion?
I think, I think it might be difficult to do it for, as part of this, but we could do it at the next meeting even. But I wouldn't do it as part of this one because it's strictly, is this a use, is this a good, so, yeah.
I agree.
But, but the fact that, that this board might be inclined to that.
Okay. Do I?
I'll make that motion.
Do you hear a motion from Ann?
To recommending what?
Zone. Recommending the zone change.
To NS.
Do you want to add any reasoning for that, for the?
Well, I think it meets the area, as you mentioned, Joe, much clearer than the CA, you know, it's less. Intense.
Intense, or much less intense usage. I believe it would have virtually no impact up there. The neighbor, neighboring of Starview would have very little impact with the nature of what we're intending, what you are intending to construct.
I think it's consistent, it's consistent with. Whether you see Michael Center that's up there now.
Yeah. So that's your motion.
It's right in the name.
Yeah.
Okay.
Said it's right in the name of the neighborhood shopping.
Yeah, right.
It is.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Ann, second by Ann, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, we will be making a positive recommendation to them. And I am being told by council that we'll have to make any further recommendation to the ZVA at a later time. I think I know where that's headed.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the application by Harrington Homes. This is on for a discussion, it is a 34-lot subdivision and site plan for Harrington Homes at Randy Wine. This is at Randy Wine off of Pennebury. This is all on one tax map number 109-2-7.1.
My name is Christian Hill, I'm with Naprelin Consulting with the site engineers representing Harrington Homes. Matt and Neil both apologize if not make tonight's conference, so I am here to keep all rolling. So last that this board was looking at this project, I believe there were a few things that we wanted to address before we came back before you, so I can just run through, oh, oh, sorry, this is me, it's Michael. Kind of run through those outstanding items. First was the staging plan, so that has been included with most recent submittal. The project is intended to be built in three phases. The first phase being the dozen or so homes on the north side of property. Included in the first phase would be the entirety of the stormwater management facilities as is required by the DTC. So all of the stormwater basins, both the bio retention and that detention basin, will be included with the development of the first 12 houses that phase one.
Not, not to drive you crazy, but there is a question about whether or not those are going to be on lots or on common areas.
I believe right now it is the intention for the stormwater basins to be on their own lots within easements. And those.
When you say easements, that means somebody else owns the land. I want to understand who owns the land under the stormwater.
I believe that they will be on privately owned lots in easements then.
So they will, they will be on one of these lots that you're going to develop. Correct. Within easement.
Within easement, and that easement will be within the stormwater maintenance agreement that will be filed with the D with town.
And you, you understand it's always been a problem?
Yes, understood.
For us?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Christian, just so you know, our, our past record here at this board is that we do not like individual owners to have the stormwater bases on their property. We feel it ought to be, it's a community item, it should be a community issue, and it should be on an HOA type of property, and that's what we've always done in the past.
If, if that's something that the board would like to see, we can do that. I, I think that, you know, with the stormwater maintenance agreement that is being proposed, and I believe that was provided.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I believe it is the intention to have a flat map drawn up by a surveyor and have that land be owned and maintained by the HOA or the owner, whoever that ends up being. So.
The HOA or the owner, what do you mean?
The HOA, yeah.
I'm.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm concerned, I'm, I'm looking at lots six, seven, and eight, and I'm seeing that they are split between two different phases.
Just the numbering of the lot?
Yes, sir. I'm wondering how you were gonna handle that. I really think the whole lot ought to be within one phase, that two different phases.
Oh, you just, you just mean because of the, the development going on for the stormwater?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Talk to us, tell us what you think.
Well. I think, I think that a good amount of this land is going to be developed anyways for the storm and the sewer system, so. I don't see why we couldn't include six, seven, and eight in that first phase. I'm not sure.
That's exactly, that's exactly what he, he was talking about.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
That needs to be common area and not part of a lot.
The, the houses here or the area in the back?
They are in the back, that is part of the stormwater plant.
Right, well, I mean, the area back there, if I'm being totally honest, it's just a, it's just a drainage. It's, it's not like it's, has an electric control structure, there's no piping or under drains or.
They have that kind of thing.
Yeah. I mean, it, it, it doesn't really become a stormwater facility until you get over to these basins in this area.
And I guess, I guess getting back, as long as that's not part of lots.
What is?
Six, seven.
Six, seven, and eight, as long as those are not part of six, seven, and eight, maybe that works, but it's shown as part of lots, six, seven, and eight.
Well, what he, I think what he's saying is though that's just a regular easement that you would have, like a drainage easement, so to speak.
It wouldn't be built.
But, but we've never done that, and that's not something that we.
I mean, it's similar to what exists on, on these lots here with this drainage easement and this way on the back.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at a plan that shows it as a basin.
Um, oh, is, on the, on the six, seven, and eight, it's a basin as well?
Yeah.
So until we get all the way to the back of the lot, it's, it's a swing, yeah.
I'm seeing it as a swing.
Bio retention, why do you?
Yeah, bio retention is, is in the back of the lot, that's right.
But six and seven.
But six and seven, it's just this way, yeah.
Okay, so that would be retention. See, one of the things that we've tried to do, just to let you know, when we've done these in the past, is that number one, we don't want them on a lot, that's most important. And number two, we have an easement to get back there to maintain them if the HOA does not. So those two things are most, I, I mean, I don't know if anybody else has thoughts on this, but those are the two things that we've always done that have been most important to us.
So you would like to see all of the stormwater facilities shown within a common area that is owned by the HOA and is not within an easement on the private land or.
That's, that's, yes, that would be.
Other than, other than a drainage.
Yeah, yeah, and the town having an easement to go onto it, to maintain it if the HOA does not.
Okay. I will have to talk with the main site engineers.
Okay. I just want, I just want to make sure we're clear, so. So really, for a quick question, so you're saying that with an HOA, it's not definite that they would maintain that, even though? No, with the HOA, they'd have an obligation to maintain it. Right. But if they don't, it could cause problems. So we want to go on to it, maintain it for them, build back to them through our easement ability and.
Okay, yeah. Christian, I hate to bring up problems, but I'm looking at lots nine and 10. And I'm saying to myself, it's not enough frontage, there's inadequate frontage, and I'm thinking you need to go to the ZVA for a variance on that.
It's eight.
I'm not sure, because it's at the end of the hammerhead, I guess it really depends on.
Oh, yeah.
On how you draw the subdivision line, because I can imagine if you have a property line like, as if a coal staff were there, then we may be able to get enough frontage, I'm not sure, I haven't, I haven't looked at the.
I think you don't have to, you're right.
My bill is it to build on lots.
Yeah, that's a good question. That is the question that is above my pay grade, I know they want the lots.
It just, I mean, it's.
It was always the intention to have lots there.
Concerning, I know.
In the winter, snow piled up on lot 10.
Yeah, and then the fact this other thing.
Right, so we can't, we can't approve the subdivision. Let, let's assume we take care of the stormwater, that nine and 10 have frontage problems, then we did need to go to the ZVA first. If, if we, even, or this board even is inclined to.
Now, Christian, I'm only actually hearing two of us right now talking about the basin needs to be on independent property. Maybe we ought to get input from the rest of the board members, whether they, what their thought is.
Well, that's right, I agree.
I, well, I lean towards, you know, the experience and protocols that you followed in the past, you know, so.
What is done, we, we have some. We have experience on how the town is.
That's the way Rich asked.
Yeah.
We've never, we've never done anything like that.
Christian, based upon the numbers, it would appear that we, we would really want, our preference is stormwater and a private and show any type property.
Okay.
Not an individual.
Okay.
On C2? I would, it looks like it's stone.
This here.
Yeah, I didn't, can you explain a little bit about all that?
Yeah, that's just crushed, refrapped stone channel lining, just to prevent erosion of the, of the channel. Because the. That's bunk ground, yeah. It's, it's basically a swell with a lot of rock in it. It's just to prevent erosion, yeah. So that outlet control structure discharges. Uh, through a flared end section right into that rip rap line channel.
So that further affects. Back there too. You're looking for this kind of open. Except for this. This goes back here.
So where's the frontage for that lot? Okay, is that right? Yeah, which, what? But is there going to be a lot now or is it?
Let's see that.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
How vital lot ten is is being actual, though.
Well.
Not sure it's either on lot ten.
Say, say it, I didn't hear you.
I'm not sure that's either on lot ten.
Nine and 10 are on the other subdivision. I think eleven is on this subdivision, but not 10.
Well. That may, that's a moving point if it's going to end up being, um, detention.
Right, eleven is a detention.
Only eleven?
Now, looks like here.
Yes, how, how, eleven, ten, nine.
We got a bio detention on six.
Eleven.
Excuse me.
Eleven includes. The buyer attention and the detention, yes, and then eight includes the other.
So, but, so nine and 10 are. Built both like a variances?
I, I mean, yeah, I, I guess we need to look.
But it is. According to this drawing, that's part of the subdivision.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I'm seeing.
That's what I'm saying too, yeah.
So, you're gonna need to get a variance, the Z B A. And, uh. We are hoping that you will redo the plans to incorporate that the bio detention area and detention areas are separate. From, uh, lots to be sold to individuals. There's a lot of liability issues and legal issues tied together with that as well.
Okay.
Oh, oh, so. We were talking about five of, five lots only being.
Yeah, that's true.
At a time, but with this, the first phase, I think has. A lot of lots, so how does that fit into that? Scheme that they're going to be putting in. Right. So if phase one is, you know, if phase one includes the, all the bio retention and then there's. Phase one A, which is, you can only build these five lots or something like that.
I think they've got to rethink that as they rethink where these retention areas are going. Because they're going to be in common areas.
My recollection was clear that we had talked in terms of each six to eight lots per phase and. And you are exceeding our expectations.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the sanitary would be built as needed, so that initial stretch on the first run of roads would, would need to go in.
So phase one, phase one.
Well, the sanitary. That would serve phase one would be built as part.
Right, so, right, the phasing needs. Refining because.
Clarification.
It's not the usual situation because there's of the parameters of you can only build so many lots that you agree upon.
Okay.
But then there's, it butts with. You need the sanitary, right, or you can't do anything, so. Have you, have you got any approval to connect to the store yet?
From the W P, I believe that we have a letter from them, I would have to double check. Because I think Neil was the one coordinating with that. But I, I believe we have a will serve.
The letter that you sent back. Number three. About the culvert.
Yeah.
I was just trying to read this, when I read my response, I was. I just wanted to make sure, can you just explain like the first set, as far as. It says the current drainage conditions of the property exist in such a manner that. A fifty-six acre portion of the subject property, so what property are you referring to in the, for property in that statement?
The, the way that we have deleted. The drainage area. In our analysis is that on the subject property. Approximately fifty-six acres and that includes some property to the south of this, on the adjoining property. Drains to that culvert. And that's not to say that more doesn't, it's just what includes our portion of the project area. And that's because of the, um, drainage ditches that currently exist cutting across that project.
Okay, and then Doug, because of your question. You said that it is on a. The main outfall to the west is on private property across the driveway into a street, is that the property? Are we talking about the property that is next?
Right, to the, to.
Yeah, and I would ask that you coordinate with those folks because when we did the first phase. Of any line. They had concerns. You have, do I think it's going to be important?
Another, the technical thing, and we're kind of. Not really there yet because we really have not hammered out what's happening with these phases is eventually on the file map. The final map, it needs to have the overlay of. The phases and the appropriate notes about it, whatever we, we've decided, all on one map. So when it gets filed and it gets filed at the county. Everyone will know. What it is.
On the surveyor's plan map.
The preliminary plan, it needs to be on the preliminary plan and it needs to be on the surveyor's plan map. Because the, the people who are buying there need to know it.
Right.
When they buy as well.
Okay.
Then, and then any of the stormwater easement that will stay on lots. Jamie will need to see the easement that.
I think that. We probably include that as an exhibit in the stormwater.
Just want to make sure it gets.
Okay, I think we're all set. When you file with us, uh, the new revised map and, uh, get the approval of the Z B A, come on back and visit.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
We don't really want some V D A to be.
Yeah.
This again, right?
Yes, yes.
Right, we, so we need to, because we might need to just reformat or, you know.
So you also, I, I remember seven years, the site plan and project script has been submitted by our county D O T for review. And, um. Still waiting on that.
Yes, we received comments from them and we have responded, um, so we're just waiting on another round of comments or their approval on the. Okay. Um, but so far they're acceptable of the project, it's just a matter of making sure that, you know, we have all the grading and over cover and everything that they need. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Perfect.
That completes the items on the scheduled agenda. I would like to bring up one additional item. Last meeting, February fourteenth, we announced that we had received a notification from Abundant Solar. That they were withdrawing their application for the solar project on the town's Roman Road property. Uh, we were not told why. That project has not been truly withdrawn. Town board has adopted a resolution calling for a change in the town law. Section one fifty-five dash twenty-seven point two. This new proposed law, if passed, would permit the town to proceed forward. Without the town planning board's approval of either the special use permit or the site plan. While abundance application was pending before this board. We heard from two hundred and thirty-five people as their, as to their opinions about this proposed project. And it was very apparent to us. Well, let me say, one hundred and forty-five of those correspondents were against this project. And that included forty-three people from Starview, that was adjacent to the south. And sixty-three from Clark Hill, adjacent to the north. It became apparent from reviewing those letters in support of that application that a form letter had been sent. And it was also clear to us that the people asking for us to support the solar energy project. Were totally unaware of the position of this board. This board has and is strongly in favor of solar energy and solar projects when appropriate. We have approved of the east half road project with four point three five megawatts of power. We approved of the Kirkville Road project with one point five megawatts of power. We had recommended approval of the Columnar Road project with one point eight megawatts of power. We approved of the North Eagle Village project with five megawatts of power. And we approved of the Green Lake project with five megawatts of power. And lastly, we approved the Do Good Road project with a large eleven point five megawatts of paro power. This board has approved over twenty-nine megawatts of renewable power. It's a disservice to the people of this town for the organizer of that letter and campaign. To have implied that this board needs to get on board and start approving solar energy. But abundance application has been withdrawn. So no one knows what action this board would have taken. If this proposed law change passes. The public needs to understand that the vast experience of the members of this board will be usurped. And we will be circumvented. An even bigger concern is that the public will in no way have a say. There will be no requirement of public hearing. The town would be able to move forward without the approval of its citizens. As they would not be required to hold any public hearing for this solar project. Eliminating the say of the people is a dangerous form of government. And I can only pray that the members of the town board think seriously of the consequences of this proposed law.
Excellent.
Nicely said.
I, I, I agree, I. If I can jump in just. I'm a D E C. And people that have been on boards would maybe understand that. The proposed law as written. Says that a change of ownership. For the decommission of the solar facility. Has to be noticed. Okay? And so. I go back to the lease, which I have complained about forever. And I want to show, I don't know if people can see this, but this is where the tenant has to send notice. It's blank. So we have approved the lease, we have signed the lease, and I'm talking about the town. Where we are going to write a new law that says notices need to be sent for change of ownership. And we've got blank spaces. And if this is how we're going to operate, if this is the way we're going to do business. We have major problems. That's all I'll say.
I only wanted to alert the board so the board knows what is going on, that we are in fact being circumvented. And, and I'm concerned about. Uh, the use of this planning board or whether it will exist in the future, if it's totally circumvented by changing of town laws.
Joe, my understanding, Mr. Chairman, is that at the last town board meeting. They did, um. Submit a resolution regarding this new law and that they are, they will be having a public hearing. On this resolution as well sometime in March, twenty-fourth.
March twenty-third.
So, so they are, they will be having a public hearing.
On the law.
Yeah, on the law.
But the problem is, if the law is passed.
Correct.
Then the public is not going to be aware of and will not have any say whatsoever regarding them moving forward with this project.
Correct.
That's, that's the problem.
Yep, yep, I just wanted to clarify that a little bit, but you're right, it, it, you know. That, you know, that is the issue, yeah, and it's on, and they, the law primarily is on town property is what they, I wobbled a few other. Few other, I, I, um, concepts that they're throwing in on top of that, you know, so it is, it is sort of, um.
You know what's upsetting to me is that, I, I, I listened to the whole thing, I, I watched it on. And I'm looking around Rome. And. With the exception of Sarah Bollinger. Nobody on that board has anything more than two years' experience and some of those people have less. And the lack of institutional memory, which we provide. Uh, the lack of thoughtful process going through and challenging everything that we see. The whole lack of submitting it to the county, which we do. To verify that our decisions are appropriate and, you know, a higher authority does us. We're, you know, fourteen whereas's and a couple of recommendations. That's all gone. And as you said, Joe, it's not only bypassing, it's setting a terrible example. For people who decide that. They have the power, they want this to happen, and we apparently are obstructionist. I feel like, I feel like the Ukrainians and Putin is out there at the town board telling us that we don't need you. We're going to do this because it's good for the planet. Well, as Joe pointed out, we've already got more good for the planet stuff in the ground, in process. And in the waiting line, we still have work coming, right, Lisa?
With all due respect, I mean, I think that's not the best comparison. Yeah.
I take it personally to. The one person who I think would probably be behind most of the board's action wasn't at the board meeting. Or she was, she was invisible. Um, I kept waiting for her to say something and she always talks at the board meeting, she wasn't there. So I'm, I'm upset, I'm upset that the board would do something that. Arbitrary, capricious, silly, juvenile, all of those things. I, I'm, I'm embarrassed that our board would even think doing that.
And to point to Joe's point with our experience on this planning, which might not as much as yours are, but if you compare. Any of the other towns and I'm not counting. I believe we probably have approved more solar panel projects than any other town in the, in this county, probably in a few counties. So it's not like we're, we're against the order, you know, and that's a point well. And the key, the key is in my mind, we have done it in a responsible manner, we have tried to. When somebody comes in with an application, we look at it, can we screen it, can we, you know, we go through the process and. In my mind. This is irresponsible. Based on where it is and what the neighbors are going to have to look at for years to come. And that's what bothers, that, that bothers me more than that.
It bothers me also having gone up those sites and looking to see what these.
We've been in those houses.
Yeah, you're in those houses and it just, it was an eyesore, you know, again, I'm not opposed to solar, but.
No, but it needs to be responsible and.
Be responsible and listen to what the people that it's directly affecting. All those other letters that was the form letter from whoever sent it and just putting their name on it from addresses out in Manlius and. Wherever, does not affect the people that are right in that neighborhood.
And those across the street are not.
And those across the street are not going to be looking at panels. They're going to be looking at structures that are.
That was disturbing to me. All those letters that were received, it was one right after the other and just.
I want to thank you all for your comments and your thoughts and, uh. The law is only pending. The, the town board is going to be making a decision on it and we can only hope and pray that they do the right thing. Richard, did you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second Judy, by second by Judy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.